Welcome. I'd like to call to order the town council regular session at 7:38. And the date tonight is Monday, August 27th. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And welcome, everyone. It's nice to see some people in the town chambers. Dale, could we please have the roll call?
Council President Whaley.
Present.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilwoman Eddy.
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty.
Here.
Councilman O'Neal.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. We have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session July 30th, 2012.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention, motion carries. Five zero zero. We also have the regular session, July 30th, 2012.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we have the closed executive session, July 30th, 2012.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Would any town council person request anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Which brings us to licenses. Tonight, we have a resolution granting a holiday sales license to Denali Wakefield LLC, 160 Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. Application by Todd Raskin, 1 Shoreline Drive, Suite 7, Guilford, Connecticut. And this is a new application. And we have someone here to represent Denali. Welcome. If you'd like to come to the microphone and... Obviously, you are not Todd Raskin.
Hello. No, I'm not Todd.
Who about you, babe?
My name's Christine Richards. I'm representing Wakefield Denali. We're happy to be new in town here. I'm the new store manager there, and I'm here to, I guess, get permission for our holiday sales license.
So if you can just tell us a little bit about the store and...
We are actually an outdoor apparel and lifestyle clothing store, along with footwear. We offer clothing for men's, women's, and children. We also have camping gear, tents, packs, sleeping pads, stoves. And we carry... We specialize in all the top name brand outdoor apparel.
It looks wonderful. I've been peeking in the windows.
Yep. Few more days.
Do we have questions? Carol.
Do you have other locations?
Yes. We have, as far as the... We actually are an independent retailer, not a nationwide chain, but we do have five other stores. One, two, three, five other stores, and there'll be another on the way after this one. But this is our first store in Rhode Island. We're excited about it.
Nice. Where are you have others located?
We have one in New Haven, actually, two in New Haven, under the Trailblazer name. One at Mohegan Sun, under the Trailblazer name.
Ah.
A Denali, New Haven. Denali Wakefield, and after Wakefield will be a Denali in Cheshire, Connecticut. So this will be our only Rhode Island store.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Jim?
None in Alaska?
That's next.
Hence, Denali.
That will be next.
I would hope so, because you're going to borrow that name. So this is like Yuri and Bass, a combination of them?
Yeah, a combination. So we will have an outdoor section for all the hard goods, camping, sleeping bag, tents, packs. We'll have a travel section as well, with Duffels and Eagle Creek, and then mainly a lot of really nice apparel, outerwear, lifestyle apparel, base layers, shells, all your stuff you need for outdoors.
Right. But not firearms?
No firearms.
Thank you.
Polly?
What are your hours going to be?
Our hours will be, I believe, similar to what the mall is. I think Monday through Saturday will be 10 to 9:30. Sunday, we're going to start off with 11 to 6.
Great. Thank you. Nice.
Any other questions here at the table? Do you have, like, a website or you can order online?
Yeah, we do have an online, and we have a warehouse in Guilford, Connecticut. So you can do shop Trailblazer, shopdenali.com, and you can find all the products we carry there.
It's exciting. Polly?
I move approval of License A.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and we wish you the best of luck.
Can I also extend an invite out to all of you for a grand opening?
Oh, definitely.
Which will be September 8th at noon.
September 8th?
September 8th is the grand opening. We'll have lots of fun stuff, prizes, radio station, rock climbing walls, bands.
Wow.
You want to come out and have a good time? We'll have a ribbon cutting as well, so...
We'll be there.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second license tonight is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the SKARS Gears inaugural 5K walk run on Sunday, October 28th, at 9:00 in the morning to South Kingston Kears Incorporated, 109 Curzy Road, Pista, Rhode Island, subject to the execution of hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town, issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured in the amount specified by the risk manager and the Rhode Island Department of Transportation approval. Application by Julie Conti, Vice President, 110 Cedar Hollow Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. And this is new. So, do we have Julie here? Or someone to represent South Kingston Kears for the Gears Walk Run? So what we'll do is, we will put this on hold, and if somebody comes a little later, we'll go back to that. Otherwise, we're going to move on to public hearing A. This is a public hearing relative to an application for additional operational hours between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM filed by JWP Company doing business as McDonald's Restaurant, number 1993, 140 Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. Application by John Pickney, President, 103 Kingsridge Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. And is John here?
He's here.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Welcome.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I'm here tonight as... We operate right now between the hours of 6:00 AM and approximately 2:00 AM at that point. And we're looking to increase those hours. Obviously, you see the new building going up in town here, and hopefully, it's going to come out great, which it's looking good so far at this point. And we just want to maximize sales at that point. I'm sure you're all aware, the world is changing. People are now up real early in the morning, late at night, whatever the case might be. And we're finding there's a lot of people out there. Plus, the other main fact, too, it will create some more jobs. You know, we were planning on a big staff right now. This could probably possibly increase it by eight more at that point, so... So, that's my petition, and that's it.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Questions here at the table? Polly?
Are you asking for... Will the entire store be open? We discussed this before the meeting.
Right now, I want the... I'm looking for the entire store to be open.
You're not just having a window open?
No, the entire store.
Yeah. Are you going to have security? Any security measures?
No security at this point, but I have an unbelievable camera system in there that can pinpoint pretty much everything at this point.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
As soon as I finish with questions here at the table, I will open to the public. But thank you for being acknowledged. Other questions here at the table? Jim?
Where are the arches going to go? I see the framing in place now. Are they going east?
The arches are right there on the road now. They're there.
But they're staying there, so they're not...
Yep. No change at all on that, yep.
So really, no more height to the building?
No. The building is the height it is right now.
Okay.
There's a couple signs on the building itself, but that's it, yeah.
Right. Obviously, you do your research, and we were trying to figure out, what else do we have open locally, two or three towns, at those hours, 2:00 to 6:00 in the morning?
Where else?
Yeah.
Well, this is mainly McDonald's as a whole at this point.
I understand that.
You know, we're looking at towns we've opened 24 hours. It's been unbelievable, the sales at night. It's really... I was amazed myself, so...
Right. But in your research, you haven't found some other stores, coffee shops, that are open 24 hours a day, locally?
No. I am.
Jim, if I can just... I think the Cumberland Farms in Charlestown. I think they're open 24 hours, because I know they're doing pizza 24 hours.
I think Best Eaten is, too, aren't they?
Best Eaten was, but it's not anymore.
Anymore? Okay.
And they only... It was limited to their drive-through, but this, when they reopened, they did not want that.
We allowed them earlier than just a drive-through.
Other questions here at the table? Carol?
I'm just wondering, when you look at the other McDonald's that you say already has the 24-hour license, are there any issues that require more intervention from the police departments that you're aware of?
Amazingly, no. It's been... I was worried about that myself.
Yeah.
Because I know, back in the past, we used to get a lot of damage in the restrooms and everything.
Mm-hmm.
They've had nothing. I can't even remember an incident, any reporting at this time, so... I keep it open till 2:00 now, so...
Right.
And I'm having zero problems at this time.
And I know the chief is here. I'm certain the police have looked into this. Am I right, chief?
Yes, you are.
And no problems?
I have no reason to believe that you cannot prove it, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ella?
Kathy?
Could you just kind of tell us what the new building is going to consist of? I mean, I've seen these new McDonald's in my travels. I'm on the road all the time, and they're very, very nice now. These are very nice restaurants, and I know you...
Well, we did this one, the planning board and the zoning board, we did this one a little unique. It's not... It's kind of a standard McDonald's building, but it's going to have, like, a clapboard siding on it. I was kind of... It's going to be a type of blue out there. It's a... We have... By the way, we also have in the front, something unique, it's called a rain garden. I won't get into all that, but it's a great feature for trying to filter water through the town.
Oh, interesting.
Very expensive, too, by the way, but that's okay. We'll just have to live with that.
[laughing]
And that's the main features. You know, we'll have great landscaping on it. It's going to be a... By the way, it's going to be a side-by-side drive-through, which means we'll be able to take two orders at once.
Ah.
You know, whereas before, you remember the old building? You only could take one order at that time into... So this will hopefully increase sales. That's what it's all about at that time. That also creates jobs, is what the whole thing's about. The dining room I designed with a company, and it's a... We tried to keep it, you know, a little unique to Rhode Island. We put some TVs in there, and then the decor should be... You should really like it. It's got a little modern decor, plus unique to Rhode Island, so...
Oh, good.
Hopefully, it'll come out great.
Very good.
Good. Yeah. It'd be nice.
Will you still do the birthday parties?
If you want one, we'll do it.
[laughing]
Loretta's still there. She's still there. She'll do them.
My daughter made sure that I had to ask that question. I don't think there's a kid in Wakefield that didn't have a birthday party at McDonald's.
Sure.
And Ms. Loretta is wonderful.
Isn't she great?
And when is the projected date for the grand opening?
Oh, I plan on opening around October 8th, October 9th, and I'm going to operate a couple weeks to get the bugs out, and then I'll probably have a grand opening somewhere around the 20th to the 23rd, depending on how things go. And that's depending whether, maybe, hopefully, nothing of Isaac comes and visits us, you know, at this time, because...
Right.
You never know.
Other questions here at the table? Jim?
Just some observations. We really don't have any highway... Right? I don't think Route 95 of Rhode Island, we don't have any restaurants 24 hours a day, do we? Again, and, you know, so maybe this is the one oasis, Route 1 highway system, and the elbow of Rhode Island.
I don't understand what you're saying there.
Oh, I thought you'd know more geography than that.
None of us do.
He thinks you're going to be drawing...
What I'm saying is that you should be very busy. What we... You don't have any competition on the state highway system. And southern Rhode Island, this elbow, Charlestown, South Kingston, North Kingston...
Well, there's nothing in North Kingston.
Yeah, but that's what I mean. It's wide open, so this could be an oasis in helping feed some folks at those hours in the morning.
Let's hope we feed a lot in those hours.
[laughing]
Thank you.
Do you... Excuse me. Do you own any other stores in Rhode Island?
Yes, I own the two other ones in Middletown.
Middletown.
And I'm going to be... After I get through this one, I'm going to be looking at putting them on 24 hours also. It's the way of the world now.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
I don't sleep anyway, so...
Well, we're happy for you, John, so...
Thank you.
Any other questions before we have a motion?
Do we have to open the public?
I'm sorry. My apologies. I'm going to open it to the public, and I know that this man would like to speak. If you'd like to come and state your name for the record.
My name's Paul Mero, and I've lived for 40 years at 33 Red Feather Trail, off of Route 1, Indian Lake. I want to thank you for allowing me to voice my objection to this petition. I really don't think McDonald's needs to be open from 2:00 to 6:00. They're open from 6:00 to 2:00. That should be plenty. This is strictly, you know, my opinion. A little personal history. I was... After serving four years aboard flight decks of various aircraft carriers in the United States Navy, in 1971, I received my honorable discharge. With that in hand and my new life, I started searching for a community, to start a family, and raise a few children. We settled on South Kingston after a lot of research. It was very rural. They had good schools. It was a quaint downtown. It was so quaint back then that they used to roll up the sidewalks at 7:00 in the evening. They'd roll them up on Saturday at 10:00. You wouldn't see them open again until Monday. That was nice. I liked that. I really did like that. That was just rural, and nice, and quaint, and this is why we lived here. This is why a lot of people lived here. We raised a family, participated as much as we could in the community. What I'm disappointed about is that the town grew fast. It grew to... It just grew too fast, in my opinion. It went from 17,000, I think, now to 30,000. Stores no longer close down at dusk. They're even open on Sundays. Rural South Kingston is slowly becoming a town such as Warwick and Cranston, and I don't like to see that. The town fathers are trying. They've tried in the past. They tried with zoning. They tried with signage. They're doing a real good sign with the signage. And I think if the town council took a look at what they're doing with the signage and how they're being pretty strict with that, you ought to think about this 24-hour situation. Councilman O'Neal had mentioned the... What other places in town are open 24 hours? Zero. Nothing's open 24 hours. I don't think it's necessary. The fellow's building a brand-new building. I think those four hours, he's not going to make a killing in those four hours like he thinks he's going to make. He's going to hire a few people? Fine. The police chief thinks it's not going to be a problem? I doubt it. I really doubt that. If that's going to be the only place in town that's open 24 hours a day from 2:00 to 6:00, the lowlifes, the dregs of the world, are going to show up down there, and they're going to give the chief a hard time. He's just going to have to put on more police. Something's going to happen. I really would like you people to think about this hard. I had the feeling that you were just going to... Bing, go, and just approve this. Soon as he sat down, you were going to approve it. And I felt I had to come here and say something. I've been here for 40 years. It's a great town. I hate to see it go the other way, and this is just the beginning. You've also got Burger King right next door. You've also got KFC across the street. Who knows who else might want to open 24 hours a day? I don't want to live in Warwick. I don't want to live in Cranston, or Providence, or Windsocket. I like this. I like it here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. I do want to just make a statement that was discussed at the public, in our work session prior to our public meeting, that I think also some of the people that they're trying to capture are some of the fishermen. And we are a coastal community, so I just want to make that statement as well. But I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Any other comments from the audience, public? Beg your pardon?
Adjust the sound.
Yeah, we'll open it later on for other comments from interested citizens. This is just comments for the public hearing with McDonald's. Any other questions? More questions here at the table before we have a motion? Okay, I'm going to close the comments from the public hearing. And can we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Kathy.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and can we have a motion?
I move approval of public hearing item A, which approves the application for additional operation hours between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM at McDonald's on 140 Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island.
Second.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, Jim? Did you have a question?
Discussion, usually.
Go. Sorry. I thought we were on the same page, so go ahead.
I know. She did have a question. Boy, now you went so quickly there. Ah, let's see if I can recapture that question. No, I was going to say, I was supporting this, too, one basically non-alcoholic. And Paul's correct. You know, we could see a number of other coffee shops and restaurants come at us. You know, that's realistic here, but I would like to think, Steve, do we have a review as it is now, without setting aside dates? We have a review of all this, every birthdate, one year from today, or is it from the November period of time?
You would have the ability, on the renewal of licenses, on December 1st, to consider this. You would also have the ability, if the council wishes, to have a show cause hearing on whether the license should be rescinded, were there, in fact, difficulties associated with the operation. And that could be at any time that the council saw necessary to consider that, based on what the statute associated with the four hours.
Okay, good. Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted everyone clear on that. I think that's very important, that it comes back to us annually if there are any issues.
And we did talk about that at the regular session, that if there were any issues, then it could always come back to the town council. Kathy?
Yeah, and Paul, I appreciate you coming up to the microphone and speaking your passion about the town. I think the council feels the same way about that. And just a little bit of history, the Best Eaten also had a 24-hour. They didn't opt to use that, and now that they're back to... It was actually Paul Horton's. Again, Best Eaten before had 24 hours. They're not using that now, but we have granted that in the past, just to give you a little bit of history of the licensing as it's been done in the past from the council. They don't choose to do it now, and I agree, we'll probably see maybe some of the other facilities coming forward for 24 hours. But I think that, you know, when I pulled into other towns and other areas, you know, when you're driving around this country, I mean, McDonald's is kind of that standard that's there, whether you like it, the, you know, nutritional value, whatever, they're kind of the standard. And we do have an early morning population that does, you know, utilize these restaurants, and that's why I think that we should give it certainly a try. And as Jim has already discussed, and this is something we discussed, if there is an issue with people acting up or having problems, you know, the police will keep us advised, and we can, you know, look at it further down the road, so just to address your issues and your concerns. So, thank you.
I just want to... Is Shaw's... Does Shaw's Market have 24 hours, Steve? It does? Okay. And they're not always open 24 hours?
I'm thinking about restaurant styles, right. They don't exercise it.
They don't exercise it. Okay.
Okay. Has everyone had a chance to speak? Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
Can we have a motion? Do it again?
I already made the motion.
Motion and second. Motion and second. Are you sure you're ready?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention, motion carries, five zero zero. Thank you. Which brings us to Communication G. This is a resolution adopted August 14th, 2012, by the Portsmouth Town Council in opposition to the imposition of tolls on the Secana River Bridge, as received, placed on file in the town council further directs.
We discussed this in the meeting and before the... And we decided that we would place this on file.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And, uh, next on the agenda is comments from interested citizens. So I'm going to open up the microphone. Would anyone like to come to the microphone? We have comments from interested citizens.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm Mike Moffett from Dennis Moffett Painting. Uh, I'm also a resident of South Kingstown. Um, so I'm here for kind of two purposes. Uh, number one is my interest in the, the, uh, the award of the Kingston Free Library Painting Proposal. And, um, obviously I have an interest in that, but I also have an interest in the building as a tax-paying citizen. Um, you know, the, the bids came in, and obviously there was a significant low bidder. And if we look at the base contract, which is the bulk of the work, it's, uh, it's 31% below the second-place bid. So, it, it's quite a discrepancy, and with the municipal, uh, prevailing wage act, um, there, there can't be a, "I have cheaper labor." It's, it's a matter of how quick can you do the job? So, when you look at that 31% discrepancy, our company's kind of pride on, "Are we efficient?" You know, it's in our company, um, core values. Is what I'm doing efficient? So I have a hard time believing that you can get a quality job for 30% quicker than our company. Um, a lot of the specifications are specific in quality. Uh, there's, there's references to the Department of Interior specifications. Uh, they went to the trouble of saying, "It has to be brushed. You cannot do this fast by spraying it." So there's been a lot of concerns, uh, when writing the specifications about quality. Um, so that brings up the interest of lowest qualified bid. Um, everything that you wrote in the specifications isn't about low, low cost. It's about how the job's done, and making sure it's done correctly. And it looks like there's some adhesion problems from the last time. So, when you're, when you're, when you're casting your vote for who's gonna do this job, can they do it 31% faster, and how long is the job gonna last? So I'd just like to point out, as well as when you, when you mention, uh, when we buy a product, if a product is 30% cheaper, and it's a car, there's, there's a concern. Just because we're painting a building, it's still a product. It's a product of labor, and it's, and, and material in this project isn't a significant cost. The bulk of this job is labor. So, keep in mind that, even though it's a service, it is a product. It's a product of labor. And regarding references, uh, the references that I, I know he listed, they don't measure up to what the building is you're painting. I don't know, um, I don't know the qualifications of who checked into them, but I can tell you that the buildings at URI, uh, are labeled, you know, it's a cleanup job. Uh, they, they debated about replacing the siding 'cause it was in such bad shape. It's all one color. Uh, there wasn't a lot of heavy specifications on it. And a lot of the, a lot of the buildings on the Navy Base are commercial projects. Um, so the historical value, it's a lot of stone structures that don't have a lot of painting. So, I expect that the references that he gave would be good. You're not gonna put down bad references. But are those references relevant to your project? So, just keep those in mind, and, uh, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Yes, Steve, I had a question for you on the, um, on this bid. Um, you said the board, the library board, or a subcommittee of the board, library board, uh, who, who in fact does the homework in, in choosing this, and does the research, and, um, et cetera?
The facilities manager is responsible for the development of the bidding documents on behalf of the, uh, library director. And the specifications are prepared, and then reviewed through the, uh, state historical preservation architect. They're the same specifications that we've used in each of the different, uh, buildings, uh, improvements have been made with Kingston.
We can go into more detail, Jim, when that comes up on the agenda, if you'd like.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I just wanted to follow up, it was on my mind.
Okay. We will have further discussion, won't, um, Dennis, when we get to the, when we get to that topic. Mike?
That's Mike.
Sorry. Um...
So, still on comments from interested?
Comments from interested citizens, and I think Jonathan's gonna speak.
Okay.
Good evening. Uh, Jonathan Daley-Labelle. Uh, I'm an interested citizen. Uh, full disclosure, I'm also a candidate for, uh, school committee. And, um, I would think that other interested citizens, uh, would be interested to know, uh, changes that are, uh, about to get locked in, uh, over at the school department. Um, they're working on changing, and I want you to make sure that you're aware of it. Um, they're looking at changing their bylaws, uh, which these last two years, they really tightened up, um, people's ability to approach a school committee, and the school committee's ability to interact, uh, with community members in the, in their, uh, public meetings. Um, they also went, started going to a pretty erratic meeting schedule. And, uh, so now they're looking to make these changes to kind of lock in, uh, the process that they enacted, uh, a couple of years ago, without any public vote and any public discussion, on how they're, on the, how they're conducting their business. So, I hope that you're aware, uh, that if, they've done their first reading, uh, they're gonna do a second reading on the 4th, and I believe they're gonna vote on it, on their meeting on the 4th. And if the proposed changes are enacted, uh, it's gonna halt the school committee members' ability to interact with community members in a public meeting. Uh, it's gonna lock in that the school committee meetings are not meetings with the public. And the question I'd say to that, you know, they made all this promotion when they brought in this superintendent, and some of the school committee members, the same thing. They're all pledging to engage all stakeholders. And I'm just wondering, how do they engage all stakeholders if they won't interact with citizens that, uh, come into their meetings? Uh, they're gonna limit community members' ability to speak to the school committee more than once per meeting, uh, even if there's a number of, uh, items of interest on their agenda. And they're also reducing the commitment, uh, uh, to meet twice a month to once a month. And so if somebody comes in with a question, they already have started a, uh, practice of not answering questions anyways, but should the new chair decide that they do wanna answer questions from the citizens, gasp, it's gonna be, now there's gonna be a longer waiting period. Now, the thing I would like, uh, to bring to your attention is you've been called into task by various, uh, officers of the local Democratic Town Committee for how you do business. And they've really made a lot of accusations about how you do business and interact with the public. And the people that come in to this chamber, uh, leveling charges, it seems to be predominantly against, uh, council president, I have not seen them once in school committee. So that can also be another, uh, validation that all that effort trying to discredit, uh, members of the, of the town council, such as the president, was all just politics. It really was nothing more than that. Um, also, I was disappointed, I'm disappointed that they're not making a commitment to video record all their meetings. A lot of the meetings, they are not video recording. Um, I would think that they should put that into their bylaws, the technologies available. Um, we're paying for the service as taxpayers, so I don't know why that would not be put into the bylaws. Um, so I guess what I ask people to consider, well, I guess what I'm asking the town council, is I understand it gets a little sticky, town council, trying to tell the school committee how to do business. But as private citizens, if you can weigh in with school committee members, telling them that this is not a good way to go, uh, school department represents 75 to 80% of the total town budget, and to limit interaction with the taxpayers and parents is not the way to go. And I, I would like to see the town council weigh in on that, to the extent that, that you can. Um, and then, I guess I ask of community members, that as they consider who they're gonna vote for in November, that the, uh, people who are gonna be on the ballot, that have voted to change these bylaws, locking out taxpayers and parents' comments and involvement, what's the justification for it? And I can't imagine that there's a single good justification for it, except for they just wanna do what they wanna do. They wanna give more control to the administrators. They wanna give more control to the lawyers, no offense. Um, it's not the way to go. And so I hope that the voters pay attention to this, and really consider strongly rejecting any school committee member that would support this action. Uh, finally, uh, I don't know if I heard exactly correctly in the school committee meeting, um, but they did talk about the fact that the roof at West Kingston Elementary School has been leaking. Uh, I guess it was an unsafe situation, uh, basketball game. I don't know if it was one game or a number of games. So now they're talking about bringing in a consultant to evaluate the facilities, so that was one thing that was talked about that I think you should be aware of. And I also just question, they had a very rushed decision to reopen a school, so they actually, they didn't consolidate. They actually expanded the facility use, and I'm, I'm questioning the integrity of the facilities. And I think that, uh, don't be surprised if they come to you looking for more taxpayer money. And I think that it's through this process, their focus is not in the right place, and this is how they make their decisions, and that they're not having good representation, good process. And I thank you for your service. You're very professional, how you run these meetings, I appreciate it. And I think if, in school committee, would pay attention to how things are run here, the whole town would be much better off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol? Jonathan, um, are those changes in the bylaws, are they on the, um, the school website?
Uh, they're there. Uh, it's not very user-friendly, 'cause they don't show what the changes are, so as if...
But I saw a list of the, the things that they were considering. Yeah, that's in there. Okay. I, I think it's on their website, though.
It is, yes. The bylaws are there.
Schools.net?
Excuse me?
I think it's on SKschools.net.
Yes. The, the revised, the proposed revised bylaws are available. I'm not sure that draws a distinction between the old bylaws and the new bylaws. So, it makes it much more cumbersome for people to figure out what the changes are. People don't have a lot of time, as you know. That's why a lot of people don't go to these meetings, and also because of how they're treated over at school department. But in any case, if there were highlighted changes, so that people could look for themselves and see what the changes are, it'd be, then you would get better participation. But people aren't gonna do the extra work typically, to see what the differences are. All right. Thank you.
Mike, um, is it the person that's holding the gavel, whether it's the town council or the school committee, um, can reasonably limit conversation, but can they cut it off with other people still waiting in line to speak? Uh, can they force, um, the public to, um, put forth questions in writing ahead of time? What, what, where does this whole thing fall?
There's a lot of latitude, Jim. If, um, if the body, the public body has rules and regulations in place, for instance, um, a lot of councils and school committees have a set amount of time that any one speaker can speak. You see that, um, not only at council and school committee meetings, financial town meetings, et cetera. Otherwise, theoretically, the meeting could go on forever. So, if, if those types of rules and regulations are in place, and everyone knows them ahead of time, um, yes, they, they can in fact, um, require someone to stop speaking after a certain amount of time. In terms of actually controlling the content, and, I, you know, that goes down the slippers. I'd be, it'd be really difficult for someone, I, whereas, um, it's very objective to say, "You've got three minutes or five minutes, and once you hit that time period, you're cut off," to start talking about what you can or can't say, or whether or not you have to, um, do it ahead of time. I know some councils require you, in their rules and regulations, if you're going to come up and speak, to put the general nature of the topic on a piece of paper, just so that when they come up, they know what it is that they're going to talk about. Um, whether or not they can force someone to ask the questions ahead of time, I, I think that probably is pushing it a little too, you know, the envelope a bit, to say that you can't come up and speak or ask questions unless we have them ahead of time. But I will tell you that school committees are a lot more restrictive than town councils by statute, in terms of what they have on their agenda, and publishing ahead of time, what it is that they're going to address. And you, as a town council, have a lot more latitude with, um, topics that are not on the agenda, so to speak. If you were ever at a, um, Newport council meeting, um, you see that the mayor runs things a lot differently than in other towns, so...
Okay, but the, the school committees are more by legislative action, or?
In terms of what it is that they can address at their school committee meetings, in terms of what they're required to publicize ahead of time, before they in fact address a specific issue, they have more stringent requirements than a town council, yes.
Which is kind of too bad.
Maybe sometimes they use that as an, you know, as an excuse to hide behind. I don't know, but the fact is that they do have, um, more specific regs with regard to what's discussed, um, on the, you know, things can be discussed, but they have to be properly advertised ahead of time.
And nothing more informative than engaging in a conversation on an issue, which is, you know, sad. All right, thank you.
Carol?
So, Mike, you're saying that there's no, um, public, like, we have, um, comments from concerned citizens. Uh, they don't have, they're not obligated to have that?
Not obligated, that's true.
So they could actually have a meeting without letting anyone speak?
Well, I...
How does that not violate the, uh...
You know, it may be that they say, "If you wanna speak, you tell us at this meeting that you're gonna speak, and we'll put it on the next agenda." But there's nothing that requires them, "You must take comments from citizens." There's no law that says that.
I can certainly understand not responding to a citizen, but why wouldn't a citizen have a right to state his piece up there? I, I don't understand.
Jim, I, you know, they would probably best be addressed to whoever's running the meeting. Um, certainly, it sounds reasonable in a democratic society, that if someone wants to get up and speak to an issue, to at least be able to get up and do that.
And I do believe that, um, and I have read through, I have read through the first reading of the by, bylaw update. Um, and I know that, back in the time when I was on the school committee, there was discussion about limiting public input, or was even discussion about having people who wanted to speak at a school committee meeting to go to the town hall, and, um, write their questions there, submit their questions 24 hours in advance. And there was also, um, dialogue about limiting the conversation back and forth with people that came to the mic. And that was going back 1998 to 2006, when I was on the school committee. But I don't see in here, Jonathan, and, correct me if, if I'm wrong, that they're going to only have one meeting a month? That's in the bylaws? I, I haven't seen that. And then, they do have, um, a response for community, and comments from interested citizens. They have limited it to coming to the mic once, and a 30-minute, um, session, I believe is in here, for comments from interested citizens. And I know that I have been at a school committee meeting recently, maybe within the past two or three months, where they did expand that half an hour public comment to, um, a little bit longer. But I didn't really find the once, once, um, a month meeting.
Uh, it, yeah, it's in there. And it does say that they may have, uh, work sessions, uh, but there's no commitment, but there's not a commitment to do, it'd be one thing if they said, "We're gonna do a business meeting once a month, and work session once a month." But they're really kind of saying, "As needed," um, which, based upon how it seemed like they were, they're trying to shift away from meetings, I, I'm thinking that "as needed" might become less and less.
Right. So I, I look at that as, it's not gonna be really limited to one meeting a month. They will do some work sessions. Um, so I, I see that a little different. It's not limited to one meeting a month, because I don't know how a school committee, to be honest with you, could get all of the work done with one meeting a month. But if there's work sessions, you know, I absolutely see that.
Well, yeah, there's a commitment for one regular meeting, no commitment for a work session every month. And I think the way they'll achieve it is pushing it to administration, and having executive session. And I don't think that's the way to do it.
Yeah, and you can only really, um, go into executive session. I think there's, you know, 10 different reasons that you can do that.
There's certainly statutorily prescribed, um, times when you can adjourn to executive session. You must do it, um, pursuant to the statute.
It's a pretty, it's a pretty large budget, a budget, and it's, uh, a large town, and there's a lot of facilities. So I agree with you, that there really is no way that you can do it with one meeting a month.
I mean, some...
So I can, so I can only figure that they must, they must have some other way of doing it.
Yeah, they'll, they'll do it, um, in a work session. They'll, but you really can't take votes in a work session, but you can, you know, deliberate and give a lot of information out in the work session, and then put it on the agenda for the regular session. So, um, I, I am interested in, no video recording with the technology available. I don't know if, do you have information of that, Steve? That, so will they still be recording their meetings? Because I do...
Well, there's no, there's no commitment.
Right, I do, 'cause I do watch those.
And there have been, there have been meetings that they have not recorded. Uh, they're, you know, two of the more recent meetings were not recorded. Um, so they have shown, and, you know, back in 2011, every single work session, they were putting in to the administration building, where they basically said that, uh, they did not have the capacity to video record. And when the chair, uh, Maureen Carter, was asked about that, um, she, her reason for moving the meetings to where it could not be recorded was logistics. There was never any further explanation. So it was just strictly logistics. And the six out of the school committee members that are not, you know, they're just, they go right along with whatever she's doing. Um, but this is where I get concerned, is once they make these changes, and there's no commitment for a video record, well, of course, you would assume that they're gonna video record. But all you have to do is go back to last year, every work session they were scheduling was not video recorded. And when they set up this, uh, reconfiguration committee, none of that was ever recorded. It's, it only minutes, which never got released. Uh, and it was very inaccessible, very unavailable. So this isn't like, I'm wondering, oh, what could happen? It's happened. And I think that's how they're making, you know, they continue to kind of make these rushed, rushed decisions, and it's, it's not good representation. But I appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight, and I appreciate your interest.
Thank you. Any other comment?
I just wanna ask Mike, uh, Mike, how quickly do minutes have to be posted after a meeting? Is there a time limit? Or Dale would know that. 30 days?
30 days, and they have to be posted on the Secretary of State's website?
No, we have, uh, time counts on state agencies posting.
Okay.
We have to post agendas on the secretary's website.
And they post their minutes on the, their school website, right? The SKschools.net? Is that where they do it? Do you know?
How much?
I, I think I've, I know I've seen him on there before, so. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from interested citizens? Jim, did you wanna have some comments?
By all accounts, um, speaking to most businesses, specifically restaurants, hotels, this has been a fabulous summer for, uh, Southern Rhode Island, in particular, South Kingstown. Business has been very good, considering, um, economic conditions. I'd love to see our newspapers, um, thank publicly, maybe see a unanimous resolution, consensus resolution in the council tonight, thanking all the vacationers, thanking everyone who, uh, helped make this, uh, uh, summer, uh, what I think is a financial success, uh, here in South Kingstown and Southern Rhode Island. Um, you know, I thought about doing a resolution last week, never got to it, but, um, you know, we really owe these folks a, a great deal of gratitude for, um, finding Rhode Island as a home in the summer.
I think we could thank a lot of us locals, too, Jim.
I, um, would like to just welcome all the teachers back to the schools, and, today, and wish all of the children that are coming back tomorrow a wonderful year. And, um, a few things that I would like to mention. We had the grand opening of the South Kingstown Animal Shelter, um, last Saturday, Saturday before. Um, and it was just absolutely delightful. Um, so kudos to all the people that made that happen. And if you get a chance, please get over and visit the South Kingstown Animal Shelter. I'm not sure if we had a town council meeting since the, um, Adult Daycare Center addition was opened, but that's also another wonderful facility that has, um, opened up their addition. And the last thing that I just wanna mention is, um, there was a cleanup on Sand Plains Trail, and it was Saturday, July 28th and August 4th. And I do want to thank Roland Fiore and his crew for cleaning up that area. Um, it is his property, and I know that we had some concerns with some neighbors. So, it's just absolutely beautiful. And I wanna acknowledge some volunteers that also, um, came forward and helped with that cleanup. So, um, my family and Jim O'Neill, I've never seen you sweat so much, um, and appreciate the time and the effort. I know you love, love cleaning up neighborhoods, and you really were out there in full force. Um, and also Meg Hilli came, and we had Mark Masson, and Pat Masson, and Jim, and Cheryl Murray, who are some neighbors over there. We had Jay White, and we had Ed Brock, who's the president of the newly-formed association over there on Sand Plains Trail. So, it's just an example of how people pulling in the community can really get things done. So, any other comments here at the table?
I, I'd just like to mention that I attended the Ocean House Saturday night for an event sponsored by the Mattie Fund, which is a foundation that offers resources to families with, uh, children with epilepsy, and...
with children with epilepsy, and it keeps up the, they keep up the good fight to find a cure. It was a wonderful event. The volunteers worked hard, and I just enjoyed myself, and it was very, very nicely done. Thank you to all that were involved.
Thank you. Any other comments? And I'm going to turn it over to the town managers' report.
Just a couple of items. I did want to make reference to the fact that the planning department, in conjunction with the planning board, has recommended, and unless the council has objection, for us to go forward with a, another work program where the students in graduate program will be looking at Old Tower Hill Road. And this will be looking at both the traffic, as well as the drainage issues involved, and redevelopment, and how it could work in a different way. If you recall, the last studio that we had on 108, I think was a resounding success. Program will be within the budgeted amounts that are available in the professional services account within the planning department itself for their operating budget. Any excess will come out of the planning reserve that has been set up for that purpose to be able to do specialized studies. It was interesting, the rain garden that was mentioned earlier with McDonald's is part of the overall programs that deal with TMDLs. Because essentially, what you're attempting to do is to reduce the amount of surface water, which is getting into the drainage systems, and bringing contaminants with them into the water bodies. Students will be looking at those aspects, as well as the safety, and how redevelopment can occur in that area. They'll also be able to study the plans associated with the redevelopment that will occur at Dale Collier Corner, and the, and the adjoining 108 that guides into Dale Collier Corner. So I think the planning department is looking forward to that program, long as there's not any concerns on the council's part. Second item I wanted to mention is that we have scheduled for Wednesday night at 5:00 a town council session. That session would be specifically, specific agenda would be for the refinancing of municipal bonds. We have an opportunity at this point, potentially, to be able to save considerable dollars based on lowering interest rates on bonds that were sold over several issues over the past 10 years. So with those three issues being reconsidered, we will provide the council with an opportunity to review that matter at 5:00, and hopefully, we'll see some good prices as far as adjusted costs for the community that will reduce debt service in future years.
Carol?
Steve, I just wanted to say, I think this URI studio project is great, because I think anything we can collaborate with URI on and get the students working on the town is good for both URI and South Kingston. Sounds great to me.
And it'll also bring in the property owners, too.
Yeah.
To get their thoughts on what could be better, or how things could be different. But, you know, we're concerned, when we did the Healthy Places program, we were concerned as far as the pedestrian access and ability to be able to cross that road. So all of those will be taken into consideration. The other thing we found is that when we deal with URI studios, when they're dealing both with DEM and dealing with DOT, we're also getting the expertise from those departments centered on a town road to be able to get their insight as to what can be done better. So it's a, it's a collaborative, it's not going to be just the town, it's going to be the property owners, it'll be state officials, as well as the university. And hopefully, they'll come up with some, some interesting ideas. Maybe not all of them will be ones that can work.
Right.
But at least some of it will be thinking outside of the box. With that, I'll answer any questions on any of the four reports that have been provided to the council since the last council meeting. If there's none, I'll yield the floor to the solicitor.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Town solicitor's report, please.
While Steve was giving his manager's report, I took the opportunity to look up the open meetings law specifically as it applies to school committees. And there actually is, in fact, a provision that says if members of the public want to discuss something, even for information purposes, that are not on a school committee agenda, they actually must submit it in writing. So if the school committee has a requirement that those topics be submitted in writing, it's because the statute, which is 4246-6, requires it. And then if, in fact, it is submitted in writing, it can be discussed for informational purposes, but like with you, they can't vote on it, they would then have to officially put it on the agenda. That rule does not apply to other public bodies such as the county. But you know that that submit in writing is required by state staff.
But can that person address at the microphone what they, in fact, requested of the school committee?
If they submit it in writing ahead of time, a school committee is allowed to have public comment sessions. But I guess that's up to them as to whether they have public comments.
Thank you. Anything else, Mike? Are any questions here for Mike? Jim?
Just anything new in village liquors? Any new procedural information?
No, except that we're meeting with a judge tomorrow morning to get a briefing. I'll be able to have a report for you after tomorrow's.
This is oral arguments, or what?
No, this is just setting up the briefing schedule. And if the judge wants oral arguments for sure, the judge will let us know that, and we'll set that, too. So I should be able to get a memo out to you after tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to appointments, and we have a few.
Yes, we have two appointments for the Affordable Housing Collaborative Committee. I move that we reappoint Mark Archibald for a term of three years. His current term expired August of 2012. That would bring him to August 2015.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries?
I also move that we appoint Jeffrey Marshon to a term of three years, also on the Affordable Housing Collaborative Committee. His term expired in August of 2012, and his term would continue until August 2015.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Which brings us to new business item E. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Seaside Painting LLC, 92 West Main Road, Middletown, Rhode Island, for exterior painting at the Kingston Free Library in an amount not to exceed $88,381, including a contingency, and as further described in a memorandum from the library director to the town manager dated August 20, 2012, and entitled "Bid Recommendation: Exterior Painting, Kingston Free Library; Bid Reference Number SK0003LI." Steve?
I think as the council is aware, the capital improvement program established a two-phase program for the restoration of the exterior of the Kingston Free Library. The first phase, which was completed last year, included the removing and replacing of the cedar shingles on the Belfry and the Mansard roof, Mansard roof, and repairing of rotted soffic, soffice around the, the windows, the dormer windows, within the roof line. The second phase, which is the phase that's before the council tonight, is to clean, repair, and to paint the clavard, to stain the cedar shingles that were installed on the Mansard roof and the Belfry, and to remove any rotted wood. Plans and specifications were developed through the library's facility manager in conjunction with the Department of Public Works, John Schock's office. The plans were then reviewed through Rhode Island Historical Preservation, specifically with the principal historical architect reviewing the specifications. We went out to bid on the item for the, for the restoration work. Five bids were received. The lowest bidder was Seaside Painting LLC from Middletown, Rhode Island, at a base bid price of $59,000. The other four bids ranged from $77,500 to $79,000 to $89,000 to $97,000. Included within the bidding documents were three alternates to the project. These included the replacement of the rear door at the library, the power washing and the painting on the archives building, and the rebuilding of the bulkhead door. The library director has provided a recommendation that would include the award of the base bid plus authorization to proceed on the three alternates. Once the three alternate items within the bids are considered, the overall price on Seaside goes to $73,151. Moffett would be at $83,869, or $10,718 more. And Matone, who was also relatively close, at $79,173 for the base bid with the alternates, went up to $89,873. Upon review of the cost presentations made, the library director, through the facilities manager, made contact with the three references provided as a condition within the bidding documents. The three references included references from the University of Rhode Island, State Department of Transportation, and the Newport Naval Station. Individuals that were responsible for those jobs were contacted. Each of them provided supportive recommendations on the work quality provided by Seaside Painting. As I noted in the pre-session with the council, none of the buildings that were referenced within the paperwork submitted by the, by Seaside were documentation of work on historical buildings. However, the work that has been completed, we did not find any indication that the contractor was not qualified to be able to provide services within the specifications. I would note also, for the record, that the requirements within the bidding documents require a performance bond equal to 100% of the cost associated with the project. This project will be under the supervision of the facilities manager with backup through public services and/or the building official's office. We will be reviewing the work to ensure compliance with the specifications. I cannot attest to the reason why there is over a 30% differential within the base bid. However, I cannot deem the contractor unqualified to do the work based on the references that were provided and reviewed through the library director. As such, the staff recommendation to the council is to award to the lowest qualified bidder, which is Seaside Painting LLC. Glad to answer any questions the council may have.
Polly?
Does the, when we have a state bid like this, are we tied to the lowest bid?
Polly, maybe I can answer that. As Steve just mentioned, and I think even as Mr. Moffett said, you, you have the latitude to choose the lowest qualified bidder. So in other words, just because a bidder comes in with a very low price, if they're not qualified to do the job, obviously, that will not result in, that will not be a good result. And there's actually a state Supreme Court case that says that when you set up bids and you set up all the various qualifications for those bids, if those qualifications are not met, even though the person happens to be the lowest cash value, you don't have to award it. Now, what does that mean? Again, Steve mentioned the performance bond, so the reality is that if somehow a project doesn't go well, or right, or correct, there's a guarantee by some insurance company or whoever that's putting up that bond. Number two, other qualifications would be having in place all the required insurance, everything from workers' compensation, liability insurance, et cetera. That would have to be in place. Prevailing wages, of course, have to be paid. So although the town does have the flexibility not to go with the lowest cash value, it must choose a bidder based upon whether they're qualified. If, in fact, the town chooses someone out without proving that the person who's the lowest bidder is not qualified, then the town will be subject to possible, well, not possible, subject to litigation by whoever was not chosen. In reading through the recommendation here, it mentions not only the three other references, but it also mentions, it mentions the issue with wet paint issues and OSHA rules and regulations, et cetera. It also mentions that the lowest qualified bidder here has, you know, 30 years of experience as a painter, and they painted schools, churches, post offices, et cetera, et cetera. In the absence, as Steve mentioned in the work session, in the absence of showing that Seaside is not qualified as a bidder, we, as a town, will be very hard pressed to reject. And that, that would be true of any bid that comes in. The whole idea, obviously, is you want to have a very fear process, which is why we have sealed bidding. But once those bids come in, you check to be sure that the lowest bidder is qualified, and then you make that award based on that. The state law requires that your town ordinances basically parrot what's in the state law, so your town ordinances say the same thing. So legally, we have to go with this standard.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, because we did have quite a discussion on this in the pre-session, and all of us would like to see a local business do it. And so we wanted to make sure that this is the way it had to be done.
Thank you, Polly. Carol?
Steve, with the, because it's a historical building, I see that you had to get permission from the Rhode Island Historical Preservation and Heritage Commission before you could proceed. Were there any requirements that the paint, the painting company that you hired had experience in historical buildings?
No.
So we don't know if Seaside did, in fact, do any historical buildings?
I think I can answer your question by saying, we don't have the ability to reject for not documenting that they have done historically significant buildings. So that is not anything that I've been provided with information on.
Okay. I'll give you a chance, I'll give you a chance. Do we have any other comments?
I just had one more question, and, and it's in regard to the, the three alternate projects, one, two, and three. And I, I don't know, this might be just a little odd thing that I noticed, but Seaside Painting for alternate number one is $7,151.40. Everybody else rounded off to zeros, but I don't suppose that makes any difference. But they were the highest bidder in that category, that alternate one. But I understand, as you said before, when you add it all together, who's still the lowest bidder is Seaside.
Correct. Before I open up the microphone, do we have any other questions here at the table? Jim?
I don't have any questions. I was uncomfortable at the work session with this, and I will not support the bid. And I take a look at qualified, that word qualified. I take a look at the stimulus money, the companies that have gotten into Rhode Island, where they've spent it, who's more qualified, or who's more politically powerful. I believe this whole world has, has to be revamped, and I'm not going to support this bid, Seaside's bid.
Okay, thank you. Other comments here at the table, questions? Mike, if you'd like to come to the microphone, I'm going to give you a chance to speak.
You know, I appreciate the support for a local business, but I kind of want to put that aside and take this as a, you know, across the board, and really focus on the specifications did require historical references. Most municipal jobs that go out to bid don't require references. It's just a straight number, insurance, or bond. It was put into the, into the bid documents, who are your historical references, and what specific relevance did they have to your project? So that was an above and beyond requirement from a traditional bid specifications. Thank you.
Mike, so you're saying it was in there in the bid? You had to specify what historical buildings that you had done in the past?
Well, it's, yes. It said, who can we contact? It said, who can we contact in regards to a similar project?
Did it say historical?
Similar.
Similar.
Similar. So a stor, historical building would be a similar project. So there's a separate sheet listed for name and contact people.
I don't know if you wanted to respond to that, Mike?
I would see, confirm that. I can not believe there was a specific bid requirement that the contractor who ultimately received the bids had specific experience with historic buildings.
What it says is that furnished, furnished by the town, it said, "The attached, he or she has normally engaged in work of a similar character as specified in the proposal." That's the reference, I believe, that gentleman's.
Did that ever, was the proposal ever specific about the fact that it was a historical building?
Certainly it indicates that this is a historical building.
Of course it is.
But it, it's not, it's not suggesting that the only people that are qualified is someone who has done work on a historical building.
I, I would think that that certainly would maybe make a person more qualified if they had done extensive work on, I mean, how old is that building, Steve? That building's pretty old. Seventeen something? Sixteen?
It's one of the original five state houses.
I will make a motion that we approve new business item E.
Second.
Motion to second. Do we have any further discussion? I think that, Kathy?
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, we, we all like the work that you do, and you do the charitable work for the community. But I think, as you tell, our hands are kind of tied on this. And this has not happened before. It's, the bids have come through for trucks and pickup trucks, you know, from years back, from Liberty Chevrolet and Belize, and that haven't made it, have not been the lowest bid, and we can't do that. And even when the tough economic times, you're always kind of saying, gee, I wish they could have picked up that, that pickup truck. But we kind of have to follow, and I, as Mr. Assillo, our legal solicitor, has told us that really our hands are kind of tied with this one. We really do wish that we could give it to you, Mike, and pass it on, but, you know, we set ourselves up for litigation, and it's going to cost the town more money in that regard. And I do hope that they do a good job, and we have the references checked, and I think everybody feels, you know, terrible about having to be, having to make this decision. But this is what happens sometimes, so that's why I seconded.
I know that I can echo all of Kathy's comments. Just wish that there was a way that we didn't have to follow the state bidding rules, and, you know, we could give it to our local people.
I still think, Ella, apples to apples, as Carol brought up, historic should have been related to historic. I would certainly, I'm certainly in the real estate business, and you better believe we work with people who have worked on very delicate older properties. Specifically, those are the folks we go to first, always. Price may be higher, but those are the folks we go to first, always.
I'm not sure if the verbiage, similar character as specified, I think that if it was, the verbiage, you know, read specifically, you know, experienced working with historical structures, you know, I, I think that, that the language that was used is not, we can't pinpoint it, Jim, but I would have loved to.
I think I can. I can do it quite easily.
I agree with Ella. I mean, I wish they had specified historical building. If it had come out like that, and you have the experience with your company, Mike, then it may have been different. But we, we are bound by the statute and the ordinance, and we have to go with the lowest bidder, and we also have to consider the taxpayers at all times. And it does seem very odd that the same job could be done with such various pricing, and that generally is not true. Most jobs are very close when you look at the pricing on any job. But I, I will vote for this. I'm not happy about it. I'd like to see a local person get the job. And I, I think we should have been more specific. I think we were with, when we were doing other types of work on this same building, replacing clapboards and whatnot. Early on, I thought that the historical nature of the building was a big factor in who we Anyway, I'm going to vote to support the lowest bidder, but I appreciate where you're coming from.
Any other comments here at the table? I'm going to open the microphone up one more time for any public comment before we take the vote. Okay, can we have a motion?
Kathy made a motion.
And did we get a second?
Yeah.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstention, motion carries for 1-0. Thank you. Which brings us to new business item F. This is a resolution adopting the Town of South Kingstown Access to Public Records Act procedure as shown on Exhibit 1 attached here, too, and designating the police chief as the public officer in charge of all criminal record requests, the town clerk as the public officer in charge of all town council-related document requests, and the town manager as the public officer in charge of all other public records requests. Steve?
You have a memo from, from Michael dated August 20. What he's indicated is that as of September 1st of 2012, all public bodies are required to come into new compliance with the Rhode Island Access to Public Records Act. The APRA Act now has specific requirements as far as reporting to the Attorney General's Office on a yearly basis. It also requires us to have a public policy posted that tells people what it is that they need to do to be able to get access to public records that are in public domain. There's also, within the policy, the ability for persons who do not wish to identify themselves to still be able to request public documents and receive those public documents without the requirement to fill out forms. In those cases, the forms would be the responsibility of the designated agents, and we would have to be able to demonstrate that when the request came in, that they were honored within the specific 10, 10-day period, or why extensions were, were provided. It also will provide documentation as to what we're charging for reproduction costs, as well as what the cost of, of research is in excess of one hour. In excess of one hour, we would be able to charge $15 an hour. We would also be charging the 15 cents per page. We would be able to give estimates to people in advance of what the cost would be for the retrieval of those documents. If the documents were readily available, we would need to be able to make them available as soon as possible. There's specific requirements within the police department as far as how they would deal with the public records requests, and when certain data that in the past hadn't been available within a specified period of time, that will have to be made available now. So we would ask the council to adopt the procedures document that's attached as the Exhibit 1. This will get us into compliance in, in advance of the September 1, and also provide the public with a written statement as to what the town's responsibilities are in terms of making those public records available.
Thank you, Steve. Can we have a motion to second, then we'll have any discussion?
I'll move that we pass new business item F.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion?
I, I just have one question. Steve, have you developed the form yet, or is that in the process?
Yeah, the form has, has been developed.
Oh, there it is. Sorry, I didn't turn to the last page.
Just give it another minute for any more questions. Here we have motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to our closed executive session. Sorry.
Hold the first.
Thank you very much, Dale. Early in the meeting, License B, South Kingstown Cares. Is anyone here to address the scares walk-run? So if we can just move that to the next agenda? Yep. Because it's October 28th, so we got time. Thank you.
We're always paying attention.
Okay. A closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46, 5A1, to discuss matters pertaining to personnel, reason Stephen A. Alfred and Alan R. Lord, pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46, 5A2, to discuss matters pertaining to litigation, reason Mattoon Beach erosion, and pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46, 5A5, to discuss matters related to the acquisition or lease of real property for public purposes, or of the disposition of publicly held property wherein advanced public information would be detrimental to the interest of the public.
Ella, if I could just add, state statute requires that we state that with regard to the executive session involving personnel, that the two personnel, Stephen Alfred and Alan Lord, have in fact been given written notice of the fact that they are being discussed in executive session.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to second, then we can do a roll call?
I make a motion to.
Sec.
Go to closed executive session.
And Dale, can we have a roll call, please?
Council President Whaley.
Yes.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Eddy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fogarty.
Yes.
Councilman O'Neill.
Yes.
Unanimous affirmative vote to, to recess to close the executive session at 9:00 PM.
Thank you, Dale.